I mean, you host one event, I know we don't necessarily host events, but if you wanted to host a carol service or a civic service or anything like that.
Well, I did one civic service and it took me £1,000 over, William.
When I was mayor, I had to fuck out of my pocket, our pocket.
Well, say because we've done £1,000.
I mean, it's never enough depending on how active you are, but I still don't think that even £1,000 is not enough.
We should have had a separate budget.
And I would like to propose to increase it to £2,000.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but the reason it went down is because it used to be paid to a lump sum and this wasn't a choice.
No, it wasn't.
This was to a going back before even Michael's time.
Can we please stick to what we're dealing with a budget, not historical hearsay?
No, but I'm just saying that that's a fact and that's why it was reduced.
Joyce's second.
All those in favour?
Providing it's spent properly.
It has to be, you can't just do anything else. Chairman, should they actually have that money in the story?
No.
It's invoices.
Exactly, everybody's...
Elections, Nick? Well, we never know, but I doubt very much we're going to be having an election in the next four months, are we?
Well, we had as a possibility.
Well, let's roll it. We get through to the sixth month form, we don't have to anyway, is it? Six months before the general elections?
No, that's co-option, we don't have to, but people can call an election.
We have got a favour at the moment.
With all due respect to everybody on this council, the chances of a Member of the public out there actually calling an election for this authority is zero. The chances of Dornian Dons calling an election for this authority is zero.
Do we have a proposal then for anything? To keep it as it is or change it or what?
I propose reducing it to zero and deal with it afterwards.
Reduce it to zero?
Yep.
Second up for that?
Yep.
All those in favour?
So we'll just say the best of lands.
Four, four. Against?
I'm against.
Put your hand up then, please. Two against.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, that's four, two, one, that's carried.
I know, it's come out for the reserve.
Yeah, so four, four, four against. Two abstentions.
No, four, two, one.
Four, four, two against.
Yep.
Three against, three, four, one against.
Is this to do with the...
Yeah, so we've put them both together.
So is this to do with the £2,000 for the... Just to give you a bit of... While I've got all your attention, I actually had a communication from Joy Ever, an email only this week.
Oh, good.
Saying that, once again thanking the town council for saying that they would contribute £2,000 to this Wurgle One event next year. And they're now looking because of that, because it looks like they've put their bid in for the Arts of Rutland or Arts of England, they're looking at using local musicians, so it'll actually help local musicians and it will be a jolly good show.
Does everyone know when that is?
Uh, no, just waiting for more details really.
All right, well, tell me then.
But it'll be in 2018.
Back end of 2018, yeah. Tell me when it's coming.
The fat rini.
Yep, brilliant. And in actual fact, something we don't know, because I think... Have I got a paper to come to council, haven't I? We had a meeting.
Oh, tomorrow's meeting's just you.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's only captured from last year. I had a meeting because we was at the... Peter Irons and myself and the clerk asked to go and speak to Rutland County Council to find out what were the indicative costs of the civic event, they'd go with that and what would they ask us to contribute. They went and got some costings. The costings they got for doing a civic event, they said that they would be good if the town council could contribute £1,000 towards a civic event because that means that they would be putting in about £1,500 themselves plus they would make enough cost for all the staff and the hiring of their own facilities, which I know is a bit wooden dollarish. But the thing is, it is a very much joint working partnership. So whereas I... Because of that, we've got, actually, we've got £2,000 for the Arts of Rutland, £500 for the fat rini. And if you were to leave that, £3,500, it would cover those events if the council voted on that paper tomorrow evening. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean you have to split it over.
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, Chairman. And actually, on another thing, because this is the final year, the 2018 commemoration, there might be some other events coming up that I don't know about. So do the council want to put any more money in that just in case? Or would you be thinking to take it out of reserves? Just in case there would be another... We've already said we're going to do beacon lighting in October. We've already said that doesn't cost us anything because that just means a bit of wood. But would we want to do anything else?
Is any of that covered in the promotion list?
Not really. I mean, we're trying to sort of line... We're trying to line band concerts, but the thing is the commemoration events are happening towards the back end, the autumn, and our concerts end in the September. So probably not.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's worth...
If you believe that's around the money, then...
£3,500 is a minimum. If anything else comes up, maybe we could lean on reserves perhaps. I don't know.
Well, I don't think we can budget, can we?
No, I can't begin to guess what it will be. And so far, we've done everything kind of a shoestring. It's been really good because there's other organisations that have put stuff in. I mean, I do know that Uppingham School are looking to host the Royal Air Force Band. If they can get them, it's not guaranteed yet to do a concert in October. That would be an event for the county, which is we will not be... People knocking on our door for that. So, but it's, you know, so it's not just us doing things, it's all other organisations.
Okay, anything else on this?
So I'd leave it at three and a half, naturally.
That was your proposal, any other debate on it? That's the proposal, second up for that? David, that's Adam, David, all those in favour?
Well, I'm not aware of it, am I?
You do. Against? Six, one.
A lot of reserves, huh?
Bank charges?
No, don't agree with this.
I wonder if I am on fire? I need to cover it, I have my coat.
Are we happy with the bank charges?
Paul, it quite happy once.
Never asked for a bank charge, just melted his pen.
Sorry.
I'll propose the bank charges.
Oh, I did. Second by Nick.
All those in favour? unanimous? Asset management, we've put nothing in, we're not quite sure what... There's nothing gone, nothing actual in the budget on... Nothing's come out from that source. We've left it in because it was budgeted for last year, but there's been actually zeros.
This isn't... This related to our assets in the register where the internal auditor keeps picking up on that? I don't understand. It said it's got to go on an Excel sheet or something, not a word, document.
It is, it's zero on it though.
But I don't know what it means.
I don't think we need a budget for that. I'll propose that. All those in favour? unanimous?
We don't even know what it is.
Neighborhood plan budget, neighborhood plan work was shoestring so far. They're coming on to an expensive year because it requires a lot of constipation. They are asking for £25,000. Comments, questions, donations and the grant application. I've put that next to it, that is that we've got... Tomorrow night, if council resolves for the expenditure they put in for in December is approved, at that point Alison can make a grant application. We can't appoint anybody until the grant application is approved because they won't allow it to be retrospective. If they grant... We can't guarantee the grant, obviously it's an application. I would expect us to get it, but it's not a guarantee. But if the grant application is successful, that £9,000 would go into reserves. They wouldn't get that on top of the £25,000. So it makes sense.
What do they do to the Jan Street? What, tell me?
Nothing, that's what we paid.
It's because Adam's flipping up and down, it's confusing.
Yeah, so I was just moving my things, okay? We're just on that one there.
Oh, right.
Neighborhood plan, profile grant.
I would just say, of course, another 10 minutes, another 10 minutes will need... If not finished by nine o'clock, we may have to extend the meeting. Just so you're aware of that. So that is what Neighborhood Plan's doing group is asking for. If the grant application is successful, and I meant every, I think it would be, but not...
So if we budget £25,000, of course...
Yeah, and the £9,000 would go into reserves.
But we're just going to be budgeting, we don't have to pay it, do we?
No.
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 I don't think we have a resolve to pay anything yet, are we?
No, they can't, no, they... It's a working group, they've got no delegated powers. The working group can't spend anything, it's got to come back to council.
And they think it's going to cost £25,000 this year, don't they?
That's what they're asking for, yeah.
On top of the 11?
Martin?
I find this very frustrating because in 2015, coming on to 2016, I asked this council's chairman to go and get grants after I went to a training and meeting thing for that purpose at Rutland County Council. I was told we don't need to. Then the Locum Clerk last year, with council's authority, put in a retrospective for £9,000. Now, at a recent meeting, we were told that a grant application may be going in and you can't do things retrospective for a larger...
Let me explain very quickly how it works.
It's for a larger figure than the £9,000. I know, but we can extend.
Let me just explain to the group how it works. Whether we like it or not, localism, they, the system works, everything is audited. We can't put in, "We want £9,000". You've got to say exactly what you want it for and it's got to be backed up with quotations. They will then audit if you spend it. If you haven't, they'll take it back, yeah? So that £9,000, we've got to show what we want it for against a quotation. We have to spend it or they take that money back.
I'm not disputing that, Chairman. What I'm raising is this issue of the ever going costs.
I'm going to move the meeting on because it's nearly quarter to nine. What we're debating is, do we give the Neighborhood Plan Steering Group £25,000 budget? As Mark, as Alan, everybody says, it's not theirs to spend, council has to resolve it. Do we put that in that budget or will we put in another figure? Nick?
I've only seen your request so far based on what's been proposed for about £12,000 for this open plan spend. Could you just give us a heads up on what the 25 is expected to cover?
Yeah.
Because I...
Yeah, I would have. Yeah, that... Because next year, there will be a lot of consultancy work and that covers the first section and not all of it.
The 25 covers the first section, sorry.
No, the 11, the 11,475...
That we're spending tomorrow.
Is what council will vote on tomorrow. That is the first tranche of consultancy work. For £25,000, they estimate is what going to be next year to finish this plan.
So on this bit where it says from April onwards... Because I was going to ask that tomorrow, that's all, so you... So that's expected to be £25,000. So if we commit the 11, effectively we're committed to spending the rest with open plan.
Well, the 11, the 11... We've got that, just about that money left in this year's budget.
Yeah.
They've got a budget for £14,000.
But if we say yes tomorrow to start this exercise, as it basically to complete the open plan proposal, it says from here you need to spend more money.
Yeah.
If that, then we're effectively with open plan, we're committing to that £25,000 extra.
Only for Steering Group recommends and council, we stay with that consultant.
But effectively, we'd chuck this work away according to their plan otherwise. So that's all I'm trying... I'm not disagreeing the amount, Michael, I just want to know where we stand. So I don't want to say yes to £25 and they only want 10, right? Because we need this figure down, ideally.
And also, if you turn down the £25,000 now in the budget, you're not going to approve the 11,000 tomorrow because you cut off on the thing. So if you're certain that you've been a rock and a hard place, we have to approve the £25,000. I'd expect that they would be making some grant applications next year, they're going to do that.
£9,000, that's it. So it's £9,000 for...
That would be a deciding factor for me if I approve any expenditure further forward. But I would... £25,000, I think we have to go with it because we're committed to the Neighborhood Plan for the benefit of the community, so our proposal accepted.
Second up for that?
Yes.
Joyce second, is it all those in favour?
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
One, two, three, four.
Against? Abstentions, so it was four, one, two, that's carried.
There's nothing on the O Street in the area.
Nothing, nothing else to do on that.
Good old Muriel. That, Muriel, yeah, that residual, that will get absorbed into reserves, won't it? Open Town Township Management payment, presumably there's nothing... Anybody want to give any money to the Open Town Township?
You're not really asking me that, are you? You're totally a question, weren't you?
Can I take those two together? Proposal was zero, both of those?
Move.
The council resolved not to pay any more, so we can't put anything in the budget.
Proposal, please, second up?
I don't know which proposal is...
Nick, all those in favour?
Yeah.
If you don't know. Community lighting, that is, we've budgeted £11,000. We haven't been invoiced yet, we will be at the end of financial year and it is about £11,000. It might be a few pounds short.
Can we anticipate an increase next year, Chairman, then?
No, we don't.
We don't, all right, thank you.
Propose.
By Joyce's second, sorry, Chairman.
That's all right. Proposed by Joyce, seconded by David, all those in favour? May put your hand up. I'm still low, sorry. Okay. The annual addition to EMR, that is contained within the policy. So we are, that's in the policy, so I propose that. Do you have a second up?
On that paper?
Nobody knows what EMR is.
We haven't got that paper.
Ian Martin, great.
We haven't got that paper.
Have a couple of mic.
It's a policy.
Policy.
It's a rule.
EMR is EMR reserve.
EMR reserve, that's all we're going to now.
The abbreviation was wrong.
So that is in, that is in council resolved policy.
Depreciation.
I'm proposing it to our savings.
My only comment on it was there's 68 benches that are in there. Is this the thing that was referred to, the rolling benches? Or is that something else on?
No. The, if, the, not the... If you look at the policy, it's got all the headings there in that policy.
Yeah, I read it as we were talking. So it says 68 benches, 10 years' life. Is this the depreciation on our current assets that are already resolved to replace? And if so, then how come? That gets a bit confusing.
That would be for the existing ones, but what Joyce is proposing is new ones as well, I believe. It might be my reason for the part there.
Okay, so, but we resolved earlier to spend some more money on that. So would that affect some, and other things on this list? So do we come back to those earmarked reserves?
We can't, because this is depreciation. That's in the policy.
But if you write an asset off, right, that alters the depreciation. So that's how it works, you know, that's all this idea, so...
The EMR reserve is the sum of money to replace those things. Council, by resolution, can add or subtract to the EMR reserve. We can't do that this evening. So we are duty bound to approve that 1895. It's a function. But we do need to vote on it, even though we've got no choice, because that's in the policy. So I'm proposing, can I have a second up, please? All those in favour? Against? You are voting against, you are voting against the resolution, Mark, you are aware of that? Okay, that's six.
That voting against is a council.
We've got 11 minutes, that's all we've got to do.
Just think, I've just had a thought actually about the benches, sorry. Someone just came into my mind about the free entry. The Memorial Institute might be doing some work on the War Memorial in 2018.
Well, we've got reserves, not very healthy reserves.
That's why, it wouldn't be a lot of money, that's why I'm... Right, income then?
Are we going to, we need to decide, are we going to get through some 10 minutes that we need to extend?
No, can I propose an extension, please? Because I'm not going to be rushing it.
We've only got the...
Can I propose an extension?
Our second, Joyce's extension. Because we mustn't rush.
So proposal to extend by 30 minutes?
I want it.
30 minutes, all those in favour?
Right.
Those against? Abstentions, six, zero, one.
That's just so that we don't rush things.
Okay, income then? Bowls Club, it's £750, that's set. Tennis?
Sorry.
No!
It's not set, is it?
Well, I'm just going to ask, don't we put it up annually anyway? And why didn't we put it up last year? And not so much.
Well, it's not annually, but it is due, the community trust and the abotments are due for a rent review.
Rent review, in 2018.
And what about the bowls and tennis?
I don't know till I look. I can't confirm it till I look.
The rent reviews are just insignificant.
Yes, they are.
It's like 0.1% or something, it's ridiculous.
I'm just pointing out that perhaps we ought to review it.
Yeah, but we can't do this meeting.
No.
They are due, they are due for... Yeah, but don't forget, Joyce, they have a contract. So they lease, so I need to check what dates. We can't just decide, we have to check, have to see when the dates run out.
Can I repropose?
Alison made a note to...
Yes, thank you. That's just what I'm trying to say. We need to be on the ball.
Going back to the budget, and are we happy with that? Or are you saying that that should increase even though we can't increase it this evening?
I think we're struggling to do it. We wouldn't be able to do it because we lead it down by contracts and agreements. The main thing is that we're not looking to decrease it, which is important. So until these come to paper, and because Alison's made a note that they are going to be brought to council in the next, whenever they're due, if they're due, then I think that, maybe we'll get a report on that as well with that compromise.
Okay, so I'm proposing for that.
So we're looking at...
What do we need to do, need to build on these then? Is there income?
No, yeah, actually it's income, isn't it?
Yeah, so the Bowls Club is £750, that's the same as last year. Christmas revenue, is that correct?
That will be £9,000. At the moment, it's, the actual today is a negative figure because we haven't had any income, but we have an expenditure. That's why it shows it as a negative. That's just an accountancy thing.
Earlier we discussed the question about reserves and allocation of... And here we've got an income as a use of reserves. For my own just clarification, what did we spend that £41,600 on this year?
What are we saying the...
Because you're saying it's income, so you're saying we've taken £41,600 out of our reserves this year and spent it somewhere, so what was that spent on, please?
Yeah.
No, that's the actual...
Yeah, but earlier we discussed putting a budget in. That's why I have a slight issue with this.
Because last year, we decided, or council decided, not to increase the precept as much but to use £41,600 of reserves to cushion an increase in precept, which is something we can do this evening if we want to as well when we get that file.
Okay, so the discussion about the footpath reclaim, effectively, I slightly took the wrong... We would be resolving here now that we would put that as an income to recover that £40,000 deficit.
If we hadn't used the £41,600 on column B, expenditure less income would have been £229, would have been £270.
Okay, that's, I just, I didn't understand that mechanism, now it's clear.
Is that figure actually correct? Because I remember when Peter Irons said that we'd got to soften the blow that it was a lot less than that.
That is what we resolved last year, that was in last year's budget. You can go back through the minutes and see if you want to.
Yeah, I'm just, no, I'm just from what I remember because I remember Peter saying £16,000.
That's in the minutes of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm not disputing it, it's just that I...
So the Royal National Community Trust income is £1,800.
And that is up for review.
That's up for review. First close lettings was £2,000, was actually we achieved £2,425. It was estimated £450 to come in, is that right?
Well, we've got the circus booked in March.
But because that's a moving piece, we've never got to even book, so that would say £2,000. That's a sensible precaution. Christmas light, and that's an income which has come through from the ball.
So that's shown, let's explain that. Because that money has not been spent, that's carried forward to the following year.
And it is earmarked, not earmarked, but it is highlighted this Christmas.
Yeah, we had to do that, otherwise it would, it would show it as being spent and it hasn't been spent. And the council, the council are not letting you do that.
Yeah.
We've got to account for the money.
It slightly confuses me that we don't show then the figures on expenditure because this money was paid a year ago or more. And it's the first time it's shown.
It was paid in the current financial year.
Paid last, paid in 2017.
Because he stood up and handed the cheque over in that.
2017, right. It only came in this year. So moving on. Lotment rents, £315, it'll change with the time being, interest.
Well, we've shown a slight increase, it's up for review.
What is?
The lotment, that's up for review.
So that's going on the agenda sometime, I hope.
Yeah, and then what's that one there, interest?
Interest, yeah.
The...
I don't know, it's a starting...
Obviously Building Society was £331 and HSBC's £45.
And rates are going up slightly, so anticipate the interest.
And what's happening to the Melton Building Society that we resolved to...
We have an application in the office.
Okay.
And then what's this one there, sorry, Michael, LCT?
Well, that is, we haven't, that's, this is income, remember? We haven't had any grant income, but we have laid out some of 2,000. So it shows it as a negative, a negative figure. Again, for accountancy. We haven't had, we haven't had any grant income, we have paid out grants.
So total income then is looking at 15, is that 15,000?
Yeah, 15,469.
Oh, that's less than last year, we've got 55 last year.
Yeah, that's why I think it's screwing.
No, we did the TV though. 15,000 for 55, so we keep moving down then? Expenditure less income then? We're getting down to the crutch. Oh, so you don't want to vote on that last bit, do you, Chairman? And people...
Can influence, can...
So, oh, sorry. So expenditure less income then?
So where we are, if we now look at the precept, so where we are now, we've now got, we've agreed the budget. What we've now got to decide, whether we want to pass all of that on, which is £273,990. We can make, we can justifiably make our precept demand flat amount because we've now approved the budget, which will give an increase of £44,200. Or we can decide to do what we did last year and take some money out of reserves. If we just go down a bit then. So looking at the reserves then, we've got an EMR reserve, something to 2,000. We've got a balance of the current year's budget of £88,000, most of which has been accounting, has been anticipated being spent. There'd be a bit left over, but it would be prudent to assume at this budget setting stage that all that will be spent, even if it might be lost. Which would then leave us general reserve of £122,000. Now, going across for our own, to comply with our own policies, we need between 68 and 136,000. So as it stands, it's heading towards the top end. If you want to, that means we could afford to use some of our reserves to reduce the impact of the precept demand. It's a risk because if we reduce the reserves now, the only way the reserves will go back up next year is either by increasing the income or decreasing expenditure. Nothing else we do. So there's the risk, which you must decide what's worth it, I guess, Nick?
I'm still confused because that general reserve, we've already discussed, we're taking essentially up to £40,000 on pass out of that.
Or 50.
Or am I completely off track? Because I think I'm, that's how I see it. We've already taken that down to 80K effectively today before assuming the paths go ahead, right? But with our strategy planning app, that's what we said we're doing. That would put that at 80,000 now.
That would bring it down, yeah.
And then we could take £44,000 down.
Probably be in breach of our own policy.
Well, we haven't...
Yeah, we just...
We didn't say, well, we haven't, no, what I'm saying is that as it stands, we would be making a precept demand for £273,990. If we... If we want to reduce that, the only way to reduce that now, because we approved the budget, agreed the budget, is to take money out of earmarked reserves. That's what I'm not saying we should do, but that is an option that we now have.
We did that last year, we can't keep taking.
No, we can't. I'll, I'll, I'll take it as an option, I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying it's an option. That's, that's what we now, now need to debate. Do we want to take any money out of the reserves? And what I've said is, if we take it out of reserves, it means the following year, we've either got to add more income, we'll bring that back.
Do we want the increase to be on council tax?
No, we don't.
It's, it's, it's a ninety point five percent increase on our, our spend.
We don't, we don't, we don't know how many, how many, it was at the beginning, we don't know how many additional houses there are in outcome in the last year.
But we know what our percentage increase ask is nineteen point six percent increase over last year. So that's what we've resolved to spend, that's a nineteen point six increase over last year, right, in real terms. So you, you need to.
In cash terms?
Yeah.
Not in pre-set.
No, no, I'm not discussing the pre-set, I'm, I'm talking about our budget, which is what we've resolved. And that's fine, because we, that's what we've got to do, that's what we want to do as a council. It's this balancing of how much we can afford to fund it, if at all, and.
That's fine, yeah.
Um, with the path spend, I'm seeing how, I don't see how we can fund it. As of my, unless I'm missing something.
No, you're not missing anything.
I, I need some clarification, earmarked reserves, does that include the twenty five thousand?
No.
For the path?
The earmarked, earmarked reserves, because everything was in the earmarked.
Okay, so the seventy two thousand for the path has to come out of general reserves this year.
It's not seventy two thousand for the path.
It is, it is, once you add VAT, it's, I know we claim it back.
Yeah, we don't pay VAT.
But we have to pay it, we can't just say, excuse me, wait for the twenty odd thousand. We're not that instant, we can't tell the supplier that we, we won't argue that.
Let's just clarify, none, none of these budgets.
Sixty thousand then is got to come out of that.
Martin, please, none of the budget headings include VAT because we claim that back. As we all brought fear on that.
I'm, I'm concerned about that as well, because I was looking at VAT claiming back. And we registered for VAT purely for Princess Avenue. And the rules say we can only claim back expenses related to that premises. And we claim everything, and I'm worried we're going to get into trouble.
We do have internal, external order.
But anyway, so you could say that half of that general reserve is for the path. So then we can't really risk spending the other half on anything, that's what I think.